Good afternoon, it's now 5:30. I'd like to call the Calhoun County Council meeting to order. Would you give us the invocation, please, man?
Let us pray. Dear Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion for the benefit of Calhoun County and its citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Now to approval of the agenda, do we have any additions?
I'd like to amend the agenda to add Judge Bloom to appearances for an update.
Second.
I'll move to second that we add Judge Bloom to the agenda. Anybody have anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's like, why does the ayes have it? Down to public comments, John, do we, Richard, I mean, do we have any?
No, sir.
No public comments. Motion for approval of the minutes of November 10th, 2025.
Second.
I'll move to second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's like, why does the ayes have it? Any committee reports?
No, sir.
Appointments, Calhoun County Museum and Culture Arts, Culture Center, Historical Commission Board, we have Ms. Lynn Doster, District One, and Luann Little from At Large, I don't know who.
Yes, sir, those are, have both put in their names in District One, and then they At Large, and so we're just, has to have approval on those two.
District One is, who's that?
That's Richard.
I make a motion that we accept both of them.
Second.
Go ahead.
I'll probably move to second that both nominees be accepted, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's like, why does the ayes have it? The Calhoun County Planning Commission, District Four, Chris Rowland.
That's mine.
Yep, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Probably move to second that we appoint Mr. Rowland to Calhoun County Planning Commission. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's likewise, the ayes have it. Calhoun County Fire Commission, Red Rock Fire District, Robin Rucker.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this one's a little bit different. This is not necessarily a council appointee, this is a representative from the fire department. And so the Red Rock Fire Department, it's not actually Fire District's Fire Department, but they had a meeting and voted unanimously from their members to recommend that Robin Rucker be appointed to the Fire Commission. There'd been some, I think an email generated, some question about a requirement to live within the county for the commission, for the Fire Commission, and there is not a requirement that you live in the county. But all of y'all know that Robin Rucker is also our Veterans Affairs Coordinator. He's not a paid firefighter, so he is qualified to serve on the commission, and in his years of experience in both law enforcement and fire service, he's qualified to serve on the commission, and there's nothing that says that he cannot as a member that's not in the county. This is not the first time that a commission member has been appointed and approved that did not reside in the county, so there is precedent for it as well.
Mr. Chairman, would I be out of order if I asked that on this paper, we changed the word district to department? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We can change that in the minutes.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and get a motion in a second, then we'll do any discussion again.
Second.
I make a motion that we appoint Robin Rucker to Calhoun County.
I second it.
Probably move to second now, Ken, you wanna?
All right, what, my, my point was, if it's the Red Rock Fire Department, I'd like for the, and I probably should've asked them to correct the agenda, but we need to, if we can, at this point, I'd like to change that word from district to agenda, I mean to department.
Department.
And I'll make that motion.
I second. I'll move to second, okay. As an addition to the amendments, to the.
Right, that's got nothing to do with the vote on Robin Rucker, to be truthful with you.
Okay. Which I do first, do I need to go, hey, Ken first?
Do the second motion first, yes, sir, it would have the, the motion that he just made to amend the wording would be first.
Any further discussion on that? If none, all in favor, the Calhoun County Fire Commission, Red Rock, you said?
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
And I, the motion, it's been motioned, so.
And second.
All in favor, aye?
Okay. Ken, ask one more, that's appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. Now we go back to the motion, the point, Mr. Rucker to that, that position.
You've had a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, any discussion on that?
I would just like to say something about it. I respect the volunteers' decision, and I do support Robin Rucker, I think he'd be very good and qualified at that job. My only hangup with that is that he is not from the county, and I think that's something we need to look into the future, to have anybody that's on all these boards and commissions to be a part of the county. So that is my only hangup with that, but I do not have any hangups with him, doing a great job.
I think we don't do that often, even districts sometime, we have a problem getting people to serve. What we looked at in the future, as long as I've been here, is especially if a person is a participant in the county a lot like he is, I think we need to look at what you said. But I think sometime a small county like Calhoun, where you don't have a lot of people to choose from, sometime we have to reach out and touch like that to bring somebody who's gonna be responsive. And I think that's what, you know, you might actually do too, that if you thought this would be the best possible responsive person, if we didn't have anybody, did we have somebody else who was?
So we don't, we don't.
And that wasn't, that wasn't our, that wasn't our decision. We're just verifying, and I think, and it's not our decision on that. So, did I have a motion in a second? Yeah, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
It poses likewise. Hold a minute, we have one to say.
She raised her hand, yes, sir, we got it.
Okay, all in favor, aye, the ayes have it. No more appointments, anybody else have any appointments first? No one? Under appearances, we have Mr. Mark Muster Smith, Project Manager, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, update on the Cameron Water Watch, Waterline Reach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Council, thank y'all for having me here today to talk about this project. My name, as you know already, is Mark Muster Smith, I'm the project manager for these larger Lake Marion Regional Water Agency waterline projects that we're actively working on with Army Corps of Engineers. And so here today to talk to you all about a project that will be very important for your county, we're excited to bring you to your county, I've been working a lot with John McLaughlin on this project, so excited to talk to you about today, Cameron Reach Waterline Project, so here today to just give you an update on this. So what this is, is it's approximately thirteen miles of water line, starting down near Old TV Road and Old River Road, and it's gonna be serving the town of Cameron ultimately. The purpose is to supply clean and reliable water from Sandy Cooper's Lake Marion Water Treatment Plant, and really what this does is helps to invest in the future of Calhoun County with more local, and important local influence and responsiveness to, to the citizens of the county. And as you would probably also be aware, it's gonna reduce the reliance on local groundwater resources and well water and everything like that, so it provides clean drinking water to your, to your citizens. To give you a little bit about the project and where the funding and everything comes from, this is, this is done under what's called Section 219, it's of the Water Resources Development Act, that's kind of what gives the authority for this, it's called Environmental Infrastructure Projects. What 219 means, because 219's just a number to everybody, but it basically authorizes us to provide assistance to non-federal interests, in this case, the Lake Marion Regional Water Agency is our sponsor, to support water-related environmental infrastructure projects. This is an example of one, we've got one working with North Royal Beach, to give you perspective too, it's for stormwater, ocean outfalls, so it's water-related environmental infrastructure type projects. Water lines, wastewater treatment facilities, water treatment facilities, storage, supply, all that, distribution, all that kind of stuff, so a wide variety of projects. So this will again use water from Lake Marion as a source for the regional water system, and it will help supply water to municipalities and counties that are in the Lake Marion Water Agency, Calhoun County being one of those. To give you a little history on it, so really the authorizations for this started back in 1999, so it's been going on for a long time. Last year, the government increased the authorization limit up to $235 million, the total expenditure of projects over time. We're not at that number yet, so that gives us a couple more years to work on additional projects in the interest of the, of the agency, Lake Marion. We have completed about fifty miles of water line in, in that period of time, and really, we say ninety-nine, but the work really didn't get started until around 2008 or so. Recently completed, the Winding Woods Reach in Dorchester County, Winding Woods Tank, and Providence Reach. Under construction right now, we have two phases of what we call the Hornsberg Berkeley Reach, which will eventually serve Camp Hall and, and other interests, of course. So the map on the right's just kind of showing, it's a little spaghetti map, showing all the different water lines that have been completed over the course of this project and other facilities. So you can see in the upper part of it is where Calhoun County is, of course, and the start of where the Cameron Reach project will take off, and then in the future, St. Matthews Reach. So this work is gonna be done, it's a little bit untraditional, but it's gonna be done under three contracts, and the reason for that is just working with the county with a grant that you, you all received under the Rural Infrastructure Authority Administration? Is it the administration? You guys are going to take on two different, two of these projects, so one of them being the Booster Pump Station, that's a necessary component of the overall reach, the other one being a small stretch, about five thousand linear feet of the water line, will be constructed under a separate contract by the county, and that's gonna be, it's soon, right?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And then the third one being the larger one, which is the blue line on here, is the larger federal project that is currently, we received bids two weeks ago today, and those bids are in review right now for that project.
But he can't tell us anything about it?
Can't talk, can't talk, yeah, John's been trying to get it, I cannot disclose that information. I can't tell you, we've got five bidders. So I'm gonna just kind of break this down into these three projects here a little bit more. So the Booster Pump Station project has been awarded already, I think the station is, is scheduled to arrive in the March timeframe, in which case that's when the construction at the actual site will start. So this is just kind of showing a shot here of where, where that is going to be, a couple photos from another project of what that would look like, so just a building in, in an area.
Locate that on the map.
Besides Shady Grove Cemetery.
Besides Shady Grove Cemetery, okay, that's what, I couldn't remember where that is. Yeah, I see the answer, I see the answer there, okay.
Hopefully we won't have any complaints from that side.
Okay, yeah, oh, never know.
All the, all the easements and rights of way have been attained for the projects too, so I'll tell you that, it's all been attained. The next project, the five thousand layer feed, I'm gonna get it back on here, so you can see right here, Shady Grove Church, it extends about five thousand feet back, back up, I guess, east of, on Cameron Road, five thousand feet there, and the, and the engineers, project engineers on this did a good job kind of setting up both the federal project and this one right here, to whichever one comes first, there's, there's methods in place for them to, you know, basically cap the end of the line for when the other project will come in and be able to tie into that component. So it really doesn't matter which one finishes first in that area, there's appropriate measures in place for both of those tying into, to whichever line gets in place first. And then the other, the rest of the project is, you know, again extending, you know, from down at the existing water tower, down on what's, down on Old TV Road? Yep, Old TV Road, and then extending north up to Cameron Reach, or Cameron Road, and then heading west from there. So the tie-in in Cameron, I want to show you this because this is important for the county here, so the water line's gonna come right across Highway 176 here, it's gonna be dredge, or jack and board underneath the road, it's gonna be two jack and boards to go across there, so that work will be occurring, timeframe's to be determined, if it's gonna occur. But it's gonna tie in at this point that you're seeing on the laser pointer, what you're seeing right here is where it'll tie into the existing water line. So the blue is what we're gonna build, and the green is the existing system here.
Which is important, guys, because originally we thought we were gonna have to 133 all the way to First Street and then to the tank, so this minimizes us tearing up the sidewalk and tearing up downtown. Like Mark said, right in front of the tennis courts there on the corner, we'll get up under 176, we will have to trench it from that point directly across from the church and the, the parking lot there, and then tie in there. Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll be two separate jack and boards, one, one right here, two going to the right here, and then one right here, two going to the right.
So why do you have to go down low to tie that water line if you can go, if run down 176, uh, Highway 176 toward Cameron?
It's the largest line that goes straight to the tank. That tank we're tying into goes straight to the tank.
Okay, so that line going out that way on the south end is a bigger line than one going toward Speeds Crossroads?
Towards St. Matthew's.
Okay.
Yep.
And so just to kind of show you some photos of what, you know, to, to expect, what for your citizens, residents to expect here, the duct line and pipe, the majority of the work is duct line and pipe installation, open cut installation, so basically digging big trenches, trench boxes might be having to put out there to, to keep the walls from caving in. You'll have clearing going along, along the roadway, all the rights of way have been obtained with, with DMT for that, or for if there needs to be an easement for private residents, all the easements have been obtained. And so you'll be seeing this kind of work happening, so there'll be clearing work and heavy equipment coming in, they'll be laying pipe alongside of it as they get ready for it, and then they'll trench and lay the pipe as they go along, and the contractors typically backfill those areas right when they finish on, and then start seeding and grassing and regrading everything right away. Another method that'll be used is directional drilling, this is typically used for sensitive areas, wetland, crossings, things like that, to avoid impacts. And so this is just a method where you send it down, send it down to Auger, it just digs down, digs down under the ground, you kind of go back and forth, boring back and forth until you increase the size of that hole enough to then be able to pull the HDPE pipe all the way through there to avoid those resources. There's six different areas that have directional drills that would occur, you have receiving pit and a, and a, and a finished pit at the end of it, and so you work from pit to pit where they'll dig underneath it, but there's no impact to any of the areas in between. So that's another type of method that you'll be seeing out there, it's pretty interesting to see it, you know, stop by, stay a distance away, check it out going on. Do you have another question, sir?
I do. You said six different places?
Six different places.
The largest is three bridges, but there's several pre-crossings that we got at directional drill. If you think about that route, there's.
Oh, I know that route very well.
Yeah, there's several pre-crosses.
I'm trying to think where the six are myself.
Well, you gotta go into the railroad.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And to kind of give you a timeline of what to expect, so we did receive bids on the 24th of November, we are gonna award this contract this month, and have a notice received likely in early January, and they should be started in January, laying pipe with an expectation to be finishing within a year, so they should be finishing by December of next year, which is, you know, in line with, with the county's, you know, requirements and, and for the, for the re-grant. So yeah, the first thing you'll start seeing is crews are gonna begin working on erosion control, putting up silt fencing, and then clearing along the rights of way, placing pipeline along it, and then performing the earthwork needed to lay that pipe. Again, work would extend, we don't, we don't dictate or direct the, the order of work, so we don't know exactly where they're gonna start at this time, that's kind of contractor means and methods, but again, it starts from TV Road and Old River Road, right there at that intersection basically, continues north up to Cameron and then Cameron Road, and then west of the town of Cameron. So this work will all be happening, the, the contractor is required to have traffic plans in place to manage that kind of traffic, they do usually do a very good job, we make sure when we read these proposals that they have a good, like, public outreach approach too, so that the, the public knows what to expect when, when they're coming up and approaching those properties too, so we're trying to do a good job making sure we pick a good contractor to do the work for y'all.
Well, and I want to thank Mark and it, well, Mark and, and the engineers for, this project a little different, so of course, Richard and I have been on several projects through the years, and we don't, we don't ever do a good enough job of advertising what's going on to the general public, especially those along the route, right?
Right.
And then if they've got a problem, who do we call? And so we're going to mail all the residences along the route prior, they contact me or Stephanie Weeks if they have any questions or concerns, and we'll be posting that on social media too, but appreciate Mark coming up with that.
So that route, I was gonna touch on that, so one of the landowners on that route will be able to put in, tap into that water line, they gonna be able to tap into that twelve inch line?
This is a district, that's where I was going, this is a, this is a distribution.
This is a transmission.
Transmission line. So they can't tap into it?
So they won't tap directly into that line?
They won't tap directly into that line, they'll have to feed off of one tank or the other, that's right, they'll have to come back later for distribution.
Because we got bad water and some of Lone Star up there that.
Now, there are places, there are places we can tap, this, this transmission main, we're gonna have hydrants every eight hundred feet, but there are some places we can tap, if the density, like Creston, the Creston community, we can tap one time there and feed the, the Creston community.
How about a picnic ground?
Yes, yes, they just can't, you can't have two taps within so much distance.
Because of pressure.
On transmission, that's right, because that's the heart, that's the artery to the heart, which is the tank, yeah.
Yeah, that was my question.
Because I mean, I, I mean, I've had people asking me already about tapping into it, and I've told them.
Periodically, we can, yeah, periodically, we can, we'll just have to look at that.
Is, is there a requirement on the number of people on those, on those lines?
No, sir.
Okay, so in other words, if, I mean, I, I know that, like, for instance, over on Weeks Landing Road, I've had requests over there, and so will, we will be able to decide how far we will run off of that, off of that transmission line with a, with a sideline?
A sideline, sidelines will be different later, that's right, that'll be something we'll go after later.
Okay, because there are.
Like for Weeks Landing and to get to Fort Mott, yep, that'll be a latter project.
Well, so eventually, if we're tying into Fort Mott at, on McCord's Ferry.
On McCord's Ferry.
Okay.
So another question I got, since he can't talk financials to you and tell you anything, are you gonna come back to us, Mark, and tell us that the bids did not come in where we were at, are we getting money back from, to the county?
Yeah, as soon as we award the contract.
You'll share that with me, and I can come in front of you and let you know what all the deal is.
I mean, 'cause it's not, I mean, we appropriated so much money for this project, and so if we not have any input as far as who gets the contract and all of those lines, are you gonna be coming back and asking the county for more money for this project, or are we already locked in?
Yeah, we, from the bids that we've received, we're within what the independent government estimate was done, and we, there's shouldn't be an additional request for money.
Should not be. Is any interest coming back to the county instead of the federal government? Is any extra coming to the county versus the federal government?
If there was a cost overrun, unfortunately, as, as John knows, everybody knows, like that, the agency's responsible for any overruns on top of what the estimated costs were for the project, so we can't go back and get another bite of the apple for more federal dollars.
We would be responsible, which, if anything left over goes to the next reach.
That's fine.
And the next reach will be St. Matthews for us.
That's fine, but I just wanna make sure that we ain't coming back, busting another ten million dollars from us for, for projects here, that we ain't got no say-so in a contract being awarded.
Yeah, I understand that concern big time, I definitely do.
And how about change orders? Who's responsible for the change orders?
That's, that's under the, the current budget, so.
Okay.
So there's a lot of contingency built into these things to try to handle those change orders, things got a little tight with some of the past projects from a few years ago with Winding Woods, Reach and Tank, I think we're in a much better position now, and I think with the bids that have come in, we're gonna be in a much better position going forward.
So y'all, y'all have actually opened the bids, you've actually seen the bids?
I haven't seen, the, there's a, what we, the way that we have it worse is we have a selection board for it, the selection board does not look at the pricing itself or contract.
They look qualifications.
So we look at qualifications, so we look at two big factors, our past performance, so they submit all these emails from different past projects. We have the contact information of those past project owners.
Right.
That, you know, that, that manage those projects. So we look at their past performance, and we also look at a technical approach, that they have to write up this technical approach narrative of how they plan to execute the project.
So it's almost a CM at risk type?
Of what?
Almost a construction manager at risk type project, where the, where, where, once you get the qualifications and you pick the best person, then, is there negotiation at that point?
There can be negotiations at that point, so we get to take them and rank them.
Yeah, I've done CM at risk, and when we did those, we would, we would give the builder a contingency, and then they would have to either turn the money back in to us or.
That, that's not necessarily a part of it, it's basically a best value trade-off, so we can look at, we don't have to award to the lowest bidder.
Correct, we didn't either.
We do not have to do that.
Okay.
And this is a, this is a full and open competition too, so it's not, it's not limited to just small business, so it's a kind of a full and open competition.
So you, how about the one on Highway 378, running down around, coming out of Conway down that way, they're putting water lines down there, 'cause you said you have all the big projects or whatever, I throw passive yesterday.
I do, I do that on Conway.
But it's outside of Conway, it's between Conway and, on this side of Lake Cedar realistically, on that, just that way. But anyway, you're going to be letting John know about the bids?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is HDPE, just out of curiosity, high density?
High density.
Polyethylene? Polyethylene, okay.
And one other thing too about this project is this summer, we will be having a groundbreaking in Cameron that all of you will hopefully be in attendance for, and, and Richard and I were at a, a groundbreaking earlier today, Congressman Clowder was there, and I did get to mention to his staffer about it, this summer would be a good time for it.
That's fantastic. Good.
I don't, I don't have any questions about that, but I have a comment, we don't, as far as getting mailers out with these people, to let them know what's going on, where they live, I think that's great, but we don't need to just be posting it on social media, it needs to maybe go on the website, 'cause not everybody has social media.
Yep.
The same with our council meetings, we probably need to start posting them on the website. That was brought to my attention this week, is when people don't have social media and they can't see these meetings.
Agenda, you mean?
No, the meetings, and what he's doing here.
Like the flyer.
The flyer.
Flyer and the meeting stuff, yes, ma'am, we can put that on the, on the county webpage as well.
John, one challenge to me, we need to know where people can tap in at, because I have specifically said some stuff to some people.
Yeah.
About tapping in, 'cause I didn't know you couldn't come off that twelve inch down to a six inch to a four inch, so if you can't, we need to be able to say, we're gonna put a tap here when you can run on a water line.
Yeah.
I mean, and so before we send these letters out, somebody needs to let us know where we're gonna put these at, because somebody wants to pay to run the line three hundred feet to their house, you know, we need to know that, I mean, at least me, I do, 'cause it's my district, all of it's in my district.
Yeah, and some of, some of it's mine, up there in the Weeks Landing Road area and stuff like that.
Yeah, so.
John, while we, we can focus on that, discuss like how to best approach that, to give a good general message to make sure that we, you know, communicate that properly.
Yeah.
Okay, can we do that, we'll talk about that Wednesday this week.
That'd be good, thank you, appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody had any more questions for us? Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Chairman and Council, I just have a very brief update, I am not that tall, so we're gonna do this. Just a very brief update on the magistrate system, I want to let you know that first, the budget for magistrate court is fairly stable, I, I don't think we asked for much increase this year. I will tell you, in the coming budget cycles in the future, there may be requests for increasing some of the part-time support staff to more full-time support staff, I'm discussing that with Richard. The Sandy Run magistrate court, as I predicted some years ago, is all, is receiving almost as many civil cases now as the St. Matthews Court, so I don't anticipate increasing the judges' time beyond the current three days up there in Sandy Run, but the clerk's time, she may need to start opening on Thursdays to, to accommodate citizens' requests and filings up there, so that's to let you know that. I did want to let you know, this past six months of this fiscal year, the magistrate court system garnered close to fifty thousand dollars, the King. that came back to the county. I've always said, we're not in the business of generating funds, but everything from criminal fines, traffic tickets, civil filings, the fees are set by Columbia. I wish all of that could stay here in the county, but as you know, about fifty-four percent of that goes back to Columbia. Forty-six percent stays here and that, just in the last six months, generated about fifty thousand dollars for the county funds. Next, all three of us magistrates are up for reappointment in this twenty twenty-six legislative session. We have met with Senator Russell Ott. It is my understanding his intention is to request the governor to nominate all three of us, myself, Judge Teague in Sandy Run and Judge Keller, from Cameron, St. Matthews, to another four term, four-year terms for our posts. We would sure appreciate a letter of support from the council and, and I'll go through Richard for that. Lastly, we have two, two last things. We continue to organize the three magistrate courts for efficient use of, of, um, of the three, the three judges who hold those courts and I'll give you some examples. For example, Judge Teague does all the DNR cases in Sandy Run. He also does all the K nine unit cases with the Sheriff's Department. Judge Keller does all the animal control cases in the county and, and all the restraining orders in the county. I handle Central Traffic Court for all of Highway Patrol and other general filings, but we've organized the three magistrate courts so people can come and go to a particular court to get their, their case heard in an expeditious manner. Lastly, I just wanted to kind of recall your attention to something I, I suggested a year or so ago. I'd like you to begin considering, nothing, nothing to vote on or anything like that, of a five-year plan to build a new magistrate court. Where we're at right here in St. Matthews, we can't even use that court. It's too small for jury trials. We continue to use the big courthouse, which is fine, for our jury trials. We, we schedule in between the family court judges and circuit judges and I, and I foresee that continuing to be our practice. But at some point, that tiny little magistrate court where I'm at in between what used to be DHEC and is now DES, I believe, and DSS has outgrown its usefulness. And so, I've been discussing with your county administrator about a five-year plan to build a new magistrate court with rooms for people to come and also side rooms to talk whether they're attorneys or pro-sail litigants. Right now, if people come in and they want to kind of talk about their case, before I come out in my robe and my gavel and all that fancy stuff, there's nowhere for them to talk. They sometimes have to step outside, sometimes in the lobby where other people are. And you can imagine whether it's a civil or criminal case, you don't want other people listening on, on your business. We've had attorneys go back and stand in our supply room by the refrigerator and the microwave and the coffee pot. So, um, that's just an example of, of a five-year plan where we have a magistrate court. It has side rooms for litigants or attorneys to meet, for police, law enforcement to meet and discuss their cases before they go in front of the judge. So, that's all I have. I just kind of wanted to give you an update. I should have brought candy canes too to hand out for Christmas. I'm not asking for anything, which is a rarity, I suppose, but, but I do like to give you an update from time to time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment?
You're right.
I think it was three o'clock this morning. I was reading an article and it was about the Midlands, about the counties who had, who had had the biggest increase in crime and the ones who had had the biggest decrease in crime. And I think it was saying Calhoun County had had a big decrease in their crimes of different kinds. I don't know, you know, I'm, three o'clock in the morning, you, you read stuff. And Sheriff Summers gave a lot of credit to our courts for the way they handled the cases for some of that, um, decrease. So, I, I'm thinking the courts, you represent those courts. So, I want to congratulate you for whatever part you play in that.
I, I can comment on that in a limited way. I can't comment on any specific case according to judicial ethics. But one, I have a high regard for Sheriff Summers' office. I have a high regard for Sheriff Summers' office. I think he's organized it and does a tremendous job with the resources he has. I can tell you, I think one way the three magistrate judges have helped in that regard is on serious felony offenses, all three judges set substantial bonds. We understand every person charged is presumed innocent. We understand the state has to prove them guilty beyond a reasonable doubt at trial. At bond court, it's based on probable cause, which is a lower standard. And when we get defendants bringing meth into this county or stealing some of this construction equipment that these companies are using.
That was one of the things that was mentioned.
On the highway and other places.
Yeah.
We set substantial bonds and that sends a message, I think. And the reason we do that under the law is we're required to assess the danger to the community and the flight risk of that individual. And when we get people coming who have no ties to Calhoun County, bringing meth into this county or committing those types of offenses, we, we set substantial surety bonds. And, and they sit at the Orangeburg County Detention Center, Hotel.
Yeah.
I can use that phrase for a while. And that message has been transmitted and, and we've been doing that for a while, so.
Well, like I say, I, it's coincidental that you showed up tonight, but I, you know, I wake up in the middle of the night like all old people do, I guess. And, um, and it did, it did, it was one of the articles that I chose to read was, and, and it did give some credit to you. So, I just thought I would thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, not you individually, but the court system.
Judge Teague in Sandy Run jokes that he cannot spell a personal recognizance.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, I mean, you know.
But he, you know, if, if it's a minor offense and, and it's a local citizen, we release them to home, but, but on some of these.
Well, I think law enforcement appreciates it when, when, when what they do is taken seriously.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah.
I support looking into that five-year plan to get you the housing you need and I hope the rest of council will support that. If we can go ahead and be looking into that, that would be good.
Well, and, and Sheriff Summers did say that he had been able to hire some more deputies, which, which had helped out a lot too, so. So, that's partly to, for us to take care of.
Well, thank you so much. I'll see you before y'all have a blessed Christmas.
You do the same.
Anyone else have any questions? Judge, I just want to say we, um, some of the old timers like me who've been there a while, we just want to say we're real happy with the magistrate's office, what's happening there. Because one time that was one hot spot with us and we was having nothing but problems. So, the turnaround that you've made, I want to congratulate you and tell you thank you.
I've had a lot of support, a lot of help and I appreciate the council's support.
Thank you, sir, for what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Finish with the appearances. No more appearances, I would say. Down to resolutions, uh, resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution appointing an alternate member to the Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors. Richard, you got some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We, we don't need to read, read the resolution, but it's just a resolution. So, for the alternate for the, uh, member for the Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority is typically the administrator. And so, we need to replace John and, and put myself on that board as an alternate. So, just need to council vote to do so.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Right, move second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposals likewise, the ayes have it. Uh, nothing else on the resolutions? We down to old business? Nothing? A new business, uh, twenty twenty-six holiday schedule, need approval?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This, the schedule's same holidays as last year. The dates are a little bit different, um, but you have that in your packet to approve for, for this year.
I make a motion that we approve the holiday schedule.
Second.
Properly move it. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposals likewise, the ayes have it. Under new business, the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, you've got the meeting dates there. I'll just point out real quick that we've got, um, we've identified, uh, in, in May, there will be one council meeting because of a holiday. July, there'll be one council meeting. The second one would be because the association of counties, it typically happens at the beginning of August or the end of July. Then October, November and December, all will have one council meeting because of the holidays. And like anything else, if a special call needing these, meeting needs to be done, we can always call that. And then like we did this year, if we end up with a month that doesn't have anything on the agenda, we can always cancel a meeting if necessary.
Okay, motion for approval of the, uh.
So moved.
Second.
Properly move it. Second, the meeting schedule is approved. And as John, as Richard stated, um, if necessary, we'll call the meetings if we need to be. That's a month that we only have to one meeting. All in, go ahead.
Well, go ahead and take the vote now. Uh, well, I have a question. Richard, do you have any idea when we're gonna get into budget season exactly?
Yes, sir. So, typically, we start those conversations February and March.
Right, that's what I knew.
We'll set a budget calendar usually by the first of March or something.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposals likewise, the ayes have it. Uh, third one is procurement, equipment, recreation. Richard, you want to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. These are two items for recreation, a side-by-side and a top dresser that'll be used all across all the recreation fields. The top dresser is a, is a smaller kind of version of a, of an agricultural item that's used on smaller fields, ball fields, greens around the fairways. That is actually a used piece of equipment we got at a substantially cheaper rate than a new one. And then the side-by-side is UTV vehicle. This one's u, I mean, new. This is kind of an item that tends to get abused more and we don't, I don't really take a chance on a used piece of equipment on something like this. This, that one is coming from Polaris out of Orangeburg. We've got quotes from local vendors as well as the Orangeburg vendors and at the state contract level. Uh, and this was the best deal that we could get on that.
So, there, there was a state contract op, option on that one?
Yes, there was a state contract option. It is actually a good bit more to go through that state contract vendor as you're, you know, I know you're aware, sometimes that happens.
Yeah, well.
We like to try to go purchase from local if we can.
And I, yeah, and I would just like to say for everybody's benefit that the reason that is is because the state puts together a committee from like DNR, DOT and all these places and they come up with a set of standards that have to be met for that piece of equipment. And therefore, sometimes that piece of equipment is more.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, because of the standards that are, uh, and certainly a local vendor a lot of times can beat that because they can, 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 uh, purchase, can sell a, that, want to end up meeting the standard.
And we tend to do that a good bit on, on bigger pieces of equipment.
Right.
The local John Deere dealer just outside of St. Matthews, we've been able to buy and loan more equipment from them several times. They've been a low bid on, on things that have come to council in the past.
Yeah.
So, we're asking for approval on those two items. So, I'll note that both of those items are, are really typically, they wouldn't come to you. They're under the purchasing approval. These are, we're leasing, leasing these on a truest lease, um, so we don't have to pay for it all at one time and it requires council approval to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the purchase of that equipment.
Second.
Properly move it. Second, authorization for purchase of the recreational equipment. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposals likewise, the ayes have it. Under procurement, again, we have the new emergency operational, operations center.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. It's actually been a while now. Back in September of twenty twenty-three, uh, we were awarded a grant to construct a new emergency operations center through Department of Homeland Security fed through SLED at the state level. This was a one point six six eight million dollar grant with a match of five hundred and fifty-six thousand for a total of two point two four million. We put out proposals and they were due August twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. We had seven bids ranging from two point nine million to three point three million. After reviewing the proposals, Metters, the architect or architect of record for the project, recommended that the war go to Spring Hill Construction in the amount of two million nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand two fifty-one. This was not the low bidder. It was the second low bid. The low, the bid above that was seventy thousand dollars higher. Metters went through all the ranking criteria and strongly recommended that we go with Spring Hill. We have been going through some value engineering on this because, uh, as, as I said earlier, the total amount, um, was two point two four million dollars. So, we're still going through that value engineering process, trying to look at what can come out of it, what can be pulled out and what can be shifted. One of the grants that's been tied up and, and kind of getting a little bit political is, is something called the L E M P G grant, uh, Local Emergency Manager Planning Grant. That typically pays for salaries and equipment, things like that. Currently, right now, we don't know if the state's gonna get that money yet or not this year. They actually spoke about that at the legislative conference with SCAAC last week. Dave Chinacchio, our emergency manager, said they're hoping to let him know something in January. That's about a sixty thousand dollar budget item for us. It's not huge, but it's a decent amount of money. And so, what we're looking to do is try to pull some of the equipment, see what we can push off to be done later without being detrimental to the building. So, right now, what we're asking is to get approval, not to exceed the two point seven seven five, three hundred and sixty-two dollars that we're at right now. And, um, we're looking to try to get that down to that two point three eight dollar budget. If we can, we're gonna have to budget it in capital improvement or a budget item in the upcoming budget here.
Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Properly move it. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposals likewise, the ayes have it. Okay, we down to ordinances. First reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. First reading, the ordinance amending the county's flood damage prevention ordinance to adopt the state model flood damage prevention ordinance.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So, this, this comes out of the, the county's, uh, community assistance visit, uh, which was actually done about four years ago. And with the changeover, um, before I started here, it, it kind of got dropped. DNR is actually the one at state level that handles flood mitigation. They're the arm that handles it for the National Flood Insurance Program. And this kind of got, uh, under their radar and they brought it to our attention a couple of weeks ago. About every three or four years, the state goes back and looks at, uh, it's a model ordinance that comes down from the National Flood Insurance Program. And they usually make a handful of tweaks to language. They don't typically make any substantial changes to it. But this is an order for us to do that so that we can continue to be in the National Flood Insurance Program, which for those of you that are not aware, us being in the program gives the ability for anybody that's in a flood zone property to buy flood insurance from the National Flood Insurance Program, which is extremely expensive, but a fraction of the cost to buy it on the regular insurance market. It's just, it's incredibly expensive. So, you've got in your packet, uh, well, you may not have in your packet, but anyway, we've gone through, we've made all the tweaks. There's no substantial changes. There's no changes to things like, uh, one of the big items is the, something called the BFE, how far above the baseball innovation you have to build your house. None of that's changed. All that's still the same. It's really a lot of tweaking on wording, um, removing the hands and oars and adding showers and things like that. So, this is a first reading on, on that. We're asking for approval on that.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Chairman Hagler, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, probably moving the se, and second that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. First reading, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposals likewise, the ayes have it. All in favor, down to you, Richard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've got, uh, two items real quick. Coming up this Saturday, the St. Matthews Parade will be in town starting at four thirty PM. And then we, we posted this on the county's Facebook page, on the website and, uh, should, you probably have seen something about it, it's been picked up on the local news. But the Highway Six Bridge over I twenty-six, uh, is gonna, they're gonna start demolition on the old bridge either tomorrow or the next day. And that'll be done nightly from seven PM to seven AM. Traffic, uh, going up or down I twenty-six is gonna be diverted onto the exit and on-ramps to get around through that area. But just let you know that and that's all I have.
Okay. Anyone have anything else?
No, just, we have a local celebrity. It's gonna be the, um, Grand Marshal of the Parade.
Let me, let me also say, um, that I want to congratulate the Calvin County Band. Uh, they'll be at the Super Bowl this year.
Yeah.
They're doing great, yeah.
That is great.
Dr. Tuck doing a good job up there. And it's, I don't know the band director name, but I urged him up a praise about it, so they do a great. Dr. Tull doing a good job up there. And it's, I don't know the band director name, but I heard enough praise about it, so they're doing a great job.
Oh, he's doing good.
Okay. Have a motion that we go into executive session for economic development matter, Project Stepping Wolf.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into, uh, executive session for economic development matter concerning Project Stepping Wolf.
Second.
All in, any further discussion on that? Not all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Poses likewise, the ayes have it. Want to thank, we will be taking some action after the executive session for anybody in here who want to hang around. Thank you all for coming through. We have a resolution, uh, 13 dash 2025. Richard, I'm all in.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we've got a resolution providing for the negotiation of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Calvin County, South Carolina, the county and Project Stepping Wolf, acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors, the company, with respect to the establishment of certain facilities in the county.
Okay. Have a motion that we approve that resolution.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Poses likewise, the ayes have it. Okay, on the ordinances, ordinance 2025 dash 23. Second reading?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We've got an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax and infrastructure credit agreement by and between Calvin County, South Carolina and Project Stepping Wolf with respect to certain economic development property in the county, providing for the payment of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue credits and other matters related thereto.
Have a motion for approval. Second reading on ordinance 2025 dash 23.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Poses likewise, the ayes have it. Okay, any councilman have anything?
No, sir.
None.
I'm moved to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moved. Second, that will be adjourned. All in favor? Aye. Poses likewise, the ayes have it. Thank you guys for getting, getting.
Thank you, gentlemen.